We'll call a meeting to order of the June 30th. Special virtual meeting of planning and zoning. Today's tonight are myself, Dick Rasmussen, Ben Filbert, Lynn Conway, Gardner Young, and Chuck Shan. First, we'll go over the minutes, previous meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Mr. Shannon.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I have it. We're going to go to, the first item tonight we're going to handle is the correspondence on the sitting council on the solar panel array. We'll have Keith talk to us first on it, then we will talk to the interest on this project. Ask Chuck Ian to be, he has been to the sitting council a number of times, so he knows how it works, and he is our expert, so I think you will welcome his input. Keith?
Sure, so, first of all, just want to apologize, my camera's not working for some reason. But anyway, with these virtual meetings, for everyone who's not familiar with them, if everyone can mute their microphones when they're not speaking, it'll help prevent any crazy feedback or anything like that. Even if you're on a regular telephone, if you can mute yourself on the telephone, that'll help everyone be able to hear better. And another thing is just if everyone can state their name before they speak, it'll help with the minutes and the recording and help everyone know who's talking at one time. So, under the correspondence section of tonight's agenda, it's notification of Green Skies Energy's petition for declaratory ruling to the Connecticut Siding Council to construct a three-megawatt solar energy facility on two areas of Elm Ridge Golf Course. It's a 27-hole course, it'll continue to operate at 18 holes. As far as the background of the procedure, energy facilities of this size, they're not subject to local zoning regulations or planning and zoning approval, rather they're reviewed and approved by the Connecticut Siding Council. The council was established as a way to prevent municipalities from unduly obstructing needed infrastructure, and also as a way to prevent energy companies from overwhelming small communities with complex proposals. The Siding Council looks at all areas of review, environmental, usage, future noise, and different state departments, including DEP, are consulted. This proposal, it's subject to the Siding Council's more streamlined declaratory ruling process. So while PCC doesn't have regulatory authority over this proposal, the commission, as well as any members of the public, can offer comments for the Siding Council's consideration. Comments are supposed to be in by July 4th, so there's only a couple days to do that. Let's see. At the last meeting, we talked about having Green Skies sort of brief the commission on what it is they're looking to do and what their petition entails, and their representatives are on the line here.
Green Skies, you ready?
Um, Keith, can you hear me?
I can, but it's echoing a lot.
We're getting everyone turn off their mics, please. Is anyone from Green Skies?
Uh, I'm not sure. No. Okay, is that any better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think that was my mic. I have my video, but the mic on my computer is not working, so I dialed in, and I'm here on video.
Okay, yeah, that works a lot better.
Yeah, I hope that's working. So, I'm here, and Mike Gagnon from Mylona McBroom is on as well, he's our engineer, and I'd like to start by just presenting some site background information, and then Mike will go over the site plan and layout and some of the engineering. I'll jump in, you know, provide an overview of the impact analysis for various, and then Mike will jump back in on stormwater and, you know, disability assessment, which MMI worked on. So I guess I'm good to go if everyone is. So Keith mentioned that we have two project parcels. One we refer to as the East consists of 87 acres, and the project area is 10 of those 86, 87.6 acres on Elm Ridge Road, the main golf course parcel, south of Elm Ridge. The West project area is five acres out of 26 acres on North Anguilla Road, and the total acreage of course is 200 acres. Our project will roughly, roughly 15 acres of those. The land use of course and rest, operating with 27 holes.
Excuse me, Gay. This is Gina, this is Lynn Conway. Can I ask whoever is typing to please put their mic on?
That's me, Lynn, sorry about that.
Okay.
Thanks. So, I guess I'll go back to existing uses, the golf course clubhouse, pro shop, restaurant, 27, the driving range, and open to the public. And the proposed land use would be a 3.0 megawatt AC solar energy facility, two sited on the east parcel and one on the west. Green Skies is leasing the property from the landowner, it's a 21-year lease with two options for a five-year extension. And the owner is going to decommission nine of the 27 holes and continue operations of 18 with the driving range and the other amenities I mentioned before. The entire west array will be decommissioned from the golf course, so that would only be the solar facility. The east array were sited within the interior of that parcel. In designing the project and analyzing impacts, we looked at the town of Stonington's 2015 Plan of Conservation and Design, and we understand that the property, both parcels are in what's considered managed open space by the town, and that encompasses or includes activities that provide open space due to their nature, but don't have any legal or special protection that ensure it remain open space for perpetuity. It is not protected by an open space feeder easement, and this is private property. There are also road classifications, and Elm Ridge and North Anguilla Roads were recommended for designation as major feeder roads. Neither is currently classified a scenic road by the town or the state, and even so, we reviewed the 1990 Town Ordinance that restricts certain activities along town scenic roads, and we seem to be complying with those requirements as well. There are two stretches of the road that are considered adopter road segments, and that's Pequot Trail up to Elm Ridge was adopted by the Stonington Land Trust north of Elm Ridge up to, or north of 95 to the end of Elm Ridge, adopted by the Uplands Association. And basically, the volunteer groups organize and set up work groups and do some basic maintenance and refuse and trash removal, from what I gather in the website. To go over the zoning, I just wanted to point out that the current zoning allows for the following non-residential uses by special permit. So in the GBR district, the GBR 130, which is the western course parcel, communications towers, public utility structures and facilities, municipal facilities and lumbering and mills would be allowed there. And in the RR80, excavation operations, which I'm assuming would be sand and gravel extraction, along with cemeteries, crematoriums, congregate living facilities and convalescent homes, would be allowed by special permit. The very western portion of the east parcel and the entire west parcel fall within the groundwater protection overlay district under the zoning map atlas and regulation, and they're not in an aquifer protection area, that's a different designation, that doesn't apply to the site. And project benefits, I don't think we really need to go over, I think you've all, you all have a good understanding of what that might be, we're helping the state meet their goals through renewable energy, and there are no impacts essentially to municipal services, we're not generating schoolchildren, no impact to highway or public works or waste disposal. Generally, we're operating with minimal, no, no to minimal impact there. And I think I'm going to hand it over to Mike now, if you're there. Mike, are you, are you on?
I am. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So what I think I'd like to do is share my screen, if I can do that, and I'll just kind of go over the project plans.
You're coming in a little gravel.
Is that a little better?
No.
Okay. How about now?
Not any improvement.
call in to see if that's any better.
Do you have any plans to show us?
I do. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so essentially, this is the index plan for the project. Just wanted to pull this up to kind of give everybody an overview of the project area. So where my cursor is here, this is North Anguilla Road over here, this is the smaller of the two sites, the westerly site is here. I-95 is located off to the left-hand side of the page here. Elm Ridge Road is across to the north here. This is the second site, or the east site, which is adjacent to the existing golf course clubhouse, which is located right in this area here. So what I'd like to do is jump to the existing conditions plan. I do have ortho photos also with the proposed project superimposed, but I think for the purposes of talking about existing conditions, I'll start with these for now. So, again, this is the westerly site, that's essentially in between North Anguilla Road and I-95 is kind of off the page here, off to the left. This is the smaller of the two sites, this is the 26-acre parcel. As Gina had mentioned, this area of the golf course will be decommissioned once this project is implemented. Currently, there are these dashed lines right in here, these represent the fairways of the existing golf course. You can see that there are some areas here that are identified as the various amenities associated with the golf course, such as the sand traps and other features that are out there. Essentially, this is, this is a wide-open area, obviously, with the golf course, it is bounded to the north, there's a wooded area that exists up in this area, existing residential properties further to the north in this area on North Anguilla Road. To the south is essentially undeveloped property. There is a large wetland complex that's located down in this area. In addition, there is an intermittent stream that flows from the north down through this area here. So when we were looking at this portion of the project, we were relatively constrained with the, with the wetland resource areas, and I will go over those in detail when I get a chance to show you the proposed project. Jumping over to the other side, this is actually the existing conditions plan for the easterly site. As you can see here, the topography is a little bit steeper in some areas, but grades overall are, you know, approximately, you know, roughly moderate, 2% to 5%, but they do get a little bit more steeper particularly on the westerly, or on the, yeah, on the westerly portion of the site here. This is actually the upper half, if I may call it that, of the project area. Elm Ridge Road is located up to the north here, this is the existing clubhouse area is located here. Also, bear in mind, there is an existing cell tower facility that's actually located right over in here, that's being utilized. And then, this is actually the southern half of the easterly site. Again, this is primarily open area, this is the golf greens area, and then there's a couple of adjacent properties that are down in this area off Woodland Court. So with that, what I'd like to do is just jump to the proposed plan, and these are the ortho photos that I was talking about, what we did to kind of give everybody an understanding of what is out there versus what's proposed. We actually superimposed the proposed conditions on the, on the ortho photos. These are, by the way, these ortho photos are fairly recent, we actually, the information is from Connecticut DEP, from their GIS clearinghouse website, and typically, what we like to use is orthos that don't have any leaf cover, in other words, leaf off, so that you can see the existing features on the site. So this is actually the proposed solar facility on the westerly portion of the site. Essentially, the facility will be fenced in with a seven-foot-high chain link fence. In this particular case, this is just, just going to be standard fencing around the facility. The primary access to the facility will be right in here off of North Anguilla Road. We'll, we're attempting to use the existing access to the golf course in this area to try to take advantage of some of the existing vegetation that's located up in this area for screening purposes, and we're actually extending the row of arborvitae's across the front that's shown here, and then likewise, we're adding another row of arbres just beyond the other side of the access drive. In terms of the electrical interconnection or the electrical service to the facility, that is going to be, and if I can, if I can attempt to zoom in here, I can kind of show you what that's going to look like. So, zoomed in a little, so this is actually the electrical interconnection that's going to be served off of North Anguilla Road. It will be essentially the services taken off of the existing utility pole that's located here. It will be the series of four utility poles for metering purposes, it's a standard that Eversource requires. And then from these, from this overhead, it will go into an underground service to an electric service pad that's going to be located here. And as you can see, we've got a couple of equipment pads that are located here. Those are, those are primarily the only pads that will be located on the site in terms of the inverters. Typically, these facilities nowadays utilize what is called a string inverter that's located directly underneath or on the backside of the panels. So these are, these are essentially the layout of the project. The panels themselves are typical height in nature, they are three feet high at the bottom edge of the panel, and at the back edge, they're about seven or eight feet high. They're essentially laid in portrait, and the inner row spacing is about 12 and a half feet to provide not only access between the PV arrays, but also to provide green space as required by Connecticut DEP for stormwater management in accordance with their appendixi requirements. In terms of stormwater management for this site, we've situated a stormwater management basin that's located down in this area here, and that's designed to essentially receive the runoff from almost the entire site. And really, the purpose of the basin is twofold, not only to reduce peak flows as a result of the development of the facility, but also to provide water quality enhancement for any hard surfaces that are associated with the facility, such as the ground access roads, equipment pads, et cetera. And if I may mention, access through this particular facility, we are showing a gravel access road that will be winding more or less up through the easterly side of the facility, so that for maintenance purposes, they can, they can access each one of the individual rows of the facility. So that's essentially the development of the westerly partial parcel. We've tried to keep grading at a minimum. Typically, on this site, we need to reduce the various hills that are out there as a result of the development of the golf course, and on this particular site, we actually had to do some grading in this area here in order to direct the runoff into the stormwater basin, but essentially, in the upper area of the facility up in here, that will be vastly unchanged from existing grades. So now moving over to the easterly parcel. So what we're looking at here, this is the northerly half, sorry about that. Okay, this is the northerly half of the easterly parcel, this is the site that is adjacent to the clubhouse area that's located, this is, this is actually the parking area that's located here. The main clubhouse is actually off the page, it's off to the right here. So access to the easterly site will be off of Elm Ridge Road, we'll utilize the existing access drive that goes up to the clubhouse, and then we provided a access drive into the facility that will come off of the parking lot that's located right in this area here. The cell tower that I was saying earlier is actually located right in this area here. In terms of interconnection to this particular site is going to be a little bit different than the westerly site. Here's the series of five utility poles as required by Eversource. Those will be located along the south side of Elm Ridge Road up in this area, and then from the last pole, which is located here, there'll be an underground conduit that will run down southerly to the equipment pad within the facility here, and the reason for that is the owner, this fairway is actually going to be retained when this facility is commissioned. So in order to do that, obviously, we had to provide underground service to the facility. The layout of this particular site takes into account the operation of the existing golf course. We did a lot of different scenarios in terms of the layout, working with the owner to make sure that, you know, we could provide a facility that was in harmony with the operation of the existing golf course. Similar to the other side, this is the access road that will be essentially serve the facility in order to access the individual rows. In terms of grading on this, this particular area is, we've really tried to minimize grading other than, you know, as I mentioned earlier, to reduce some of the hills that are within the golf course area, but essentially, existing grades will be maintained in this, in this facility. We've located the primary or the stormwater basin for this site over in this area here in order to receive the majority of the runoff from the facility so that it's, it's directed down to here. In addition, we've actually graded a diversion swale that's located in here that will convey the runoff into the stormwater basin. And the outlet, by the way, is located right in here, which during high-flow events, that runoff will be directed towards the wetland area that's down in here. Just another thing to mention, unlike the other side where we were trying to utilize, I had mentioned the row of arborvitae's and the existing vegetation. On this particular site, we are providing some additional plantings for the purposes of screening. We've actually shown a row of plantings along the northerly fence line to essentially screen the facility from view from Elm Ridge Road, and we'll go into more details later on about that in terms of our visualization study. At the southerly end of the parcel, this is actually the southerly tip of the easterly facility, and again, we're providing additional landscape shrubs and small trees that essentially are going to run along the southerly fence line and wrap around in this area to essentially mitigate the views from the Woodland Court area. In addition, the fencing, the fencing here will be similar to the westerly site, except that in this case, the fencing will be provided with privacy slats throughout the perimeter of the facility to essentially screen the facility from the golfers or the users of the site. And as you can see, there's another fairway that's located down in this area, again, that will be maintained with, once, once this facility is, is put into place. So that essentially summarizes the layout of the facility. I think with that, Gina, I don't know if you want me to jump into the visualization analysis?
Um, you know, I'm thinking maybe I can walk through all the other impact sections, and then we can maybe end with that one, I'm sort of going in the order of the, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, one item, just before we, we jump into the impact analysis, I wanted to talk a little bit about our O and M, operations and maintenance, and also decommissioning. So for O and M, we So, for O and M, we do not use any chemicals within the array to control vegetation. We have routine inspections that are performed by our staff or our contractors. We check all the equipment, the mechanical and the electrical, fencing gates for security, and any stormwater measures or BMPs are routinely inspected. And I believe it's at least annually, it might be biannual. So, that's covered. We don't just build the facility and walk away. As far as decommissioning, we have a decommissioning plan in the petition that allows removal of the entire facility and restoration back to the land in its existing condition essentially with the minor grading that we'll be doing. And that allows the land to be used for a variety of uses in the future, including agricultural or whatever the landowner decides at that time would be best. It could be all golf course again if that's the way to go. But in a sense, the project is holding that land in place for future use. As well, there's a lot of debate about the recycling of panels and the cost. And, you know, a lot of developers are accused of making up numbers, but the idea is that we can't base future salvage and recycling rates on today because we're thinking 20 years out, possibly 30 years out. And this is a changing market. So, I just wanted to point out that it's, you know, all supply and demand. There are just not that many facilities being decommissioned yet because of the age of the industry. So, we do our best to come up with those estimates, and that will change, of course, and likely in our favor. We would expect within 20 years, they'll be even more efficient at removing these materials, separating and recycling and selling. Another point is that 90% of the materials in the panels are recyclable, aluminum, glass, and silicon. So, to get into the impact analysis, I'll try and, you know, go through those quickly that, you know, we don't need to get into detail on. But the first is community setting and scenic character. And Green Skies believes that there will not be a significant impact to scenic character of the area and for the following reasons. The way we've sited and designed the facility, along with the distances and setbacks from the property lines and the public view sheds along North Anguilla Road and Elm Ridge Road. There are also existing vegetative buffers. We're going to maintain and extend the arborvitae, as Mike noted, along North Anguilla. There's also vegetation along Elm Ridge in certain areas. And we do propose some landscaping and screening that should address any possible, you know, visual concerns of the area. And again, the green slating on the fence will help as well. Just generally, the northern boundary of the east array, and Mike, you can correct me, but I believe it ranges roughly 200 to 240 feet from Elm Ridge Road to the fence line. The western boundary of the east array, which faces North Anguilla, is over 600 feet from North Anguilla Road. And the nearest point of the west array to North Anguilla Road is about 140 feet, I believe. So, that's as far as the character and public view shed. As far as health and safety, there are often concerns that come up. Traffic is one of them. Many people are concerned about that. It's really temporary and during construction that there are limited, you know, traffic impacts. And that's all based on how we schedule the deliveries of the materials we're using. And we won't have too much equipment for grading. That would probably just be left on-site. So, really just a short window of time where materials are being brought in and staged. And then, you know, with the workers coming in to do the installation. And then at post-construction, we generate literally no traffic except for those annual inspections, which might be once or twice a year. It would be a vehicle with a couple people who would just walk around the site and observe what they need to look at. EMS are also a concern, electromagnetic field. We hear that comment from the public, I'd say, almost on every project, someone has that concern. And according to NREL, the National Renewable Energy Laboratories, solar facilities generate the same magnetic fields as a household appliance within close proximity. And then that dissipates with increasing distance and is not a concern, would not be a concern to adjacent property owners. EMS and safety, the project has been designed to accommodate turnarounds for any emergency vehicles that might need to enter the array areas. And we typically or routinely offer to have a meeting and a site walk with local officials, fire marshal, engineer, anyone who's interested to go over the plans, point out where the locks are, the gates, if it's a combo, we'd make sure everyone has access to the site. We'd point out the shut-off switches, although most people don't want to do that, but we would make sure that they're aware of where everything is and there's signage on all the equipment on the pads. Groundwater impact and water supply wells, there essentially are none, but we'll discuss that separately. I want to lump in a few different categories. Air quality, noise, environmental and cultural resources essentially will have no impact on any of those areas. And if you do have specific concerns about it, we could talk about that after. But we were not required to do any further studies on those. And air quality, there are just, there are no emission sources associated with this type of. As far as farmland and core forest, the Department of Agriculture determined there's no impact to the status of prime farmland at the site, even though it is mapped. It's been a golf course for nearly 50 years, I believe. And they're putting the solar facility there will not affect the soil. Same for deep forestry. We're not affecting any core forest, anything mapped. And we're doing minimal clearing. I believe the only clearing we'll be doing, Mike, is for the east side for a little bit of shading. Trying to think, to the west of the east array, and that'll be minimal.
That is correct.
In addition, we're going to seed the entire facility, both sides, with a native pollinator habitat. And we'll also consult with, there's a professor, Dr. Dave Wagner up at UConn. We'll be consulting with him on the installation of nesting boxes for native pollinator species on the west array area on that parcel. As far as wetlands, they were delineated in the fall and early winter. The project is sited completely outside 100-foot setbacks, so we have no direct or indirect impact to wetlands. As far as water courses, there will be an improvement. Currently, the landowner has a permit with DEP to divert, he's permitted to divert up to, believe it or not, 40 million gallons per year. And the average for the last five years for water pulled for irrigation is 8,400,000 gallons being pulled from North Anguilla Brook. With the development of this facility, there's a 33% decrease in the need for that water. So, just under 2 million, two and a half to 3 million gallons of water will remain in the stream. Again, that goes for turf management chemicals that are used. I don't know exactly what they are. We do have a list of them, and it's everything from insecticides, fungicides, herbicides, and fertilizers. So, 33% of the chemicals being used on the two parcels will be eliminated, which is a benefit to water quality. Wildlife and vernal pools, the only issue we have with the Natural Diversity Database Group Efficient Wildlife was the protection of the nine-spotted lady beetle. And the beetle wasn't actually seen on-site, but there is some habitat on the perimeter areas that would be suitable for it. So, their only requirement is that we don't use any chemicals on the property for vegetation maintenance, and we don't do that anyway. So, we're good to go there. Vernal pool study was done as well this spring. There were two areas identified during the wetland delineation, one at the very south western corner of the east parcel and one on the west side. And they were identified as potential vernal pools. And MMI's biologist was out there at the end of March, end of April, and end of May to do further field investigations. And they were, the conclusion was that there are no active vernal pool systems because the superficial hydrology doesn't support the breeding and development of those amphibian species that utilize vernal pools. So, that's all set for the vernal pools. We won't be impacting anything there. And as far as water supply and groundwater, wanted to make the point that the equipment in the facility does not contain hazardous or toxic chemicals. There are polycrystalline bisacial panels that are comprised of glass, silicon, aluminum, some copper wire, and other trace metals, all completely contained within a layered system. And there's, we did reach out to the manufacturer of the panels to confirm that there are no PFAs, perfluoro-oxyenoic acids. It's a whole group of chemicals that are used in industrial surfactants. And they confirmed that there is nothing, those components are not in any equipment that's provided. And what's pretty relevant is that they had a report, it's a TCLP report, and that's toxicity characteristic leaching procedure. It's an EPA protocol for analyzing materials that end up in landfill fills or in waste. And it's a way that they can run a sample in the lab of a solid material, which would, in this case, would be the materials, probably a composite of materials from the panel, to see what would be pulled through and would end up in groundwater or leachate liquids leaching through. And they, the lab analyzed a whole list of inorganic and metals, inorganic metals and actually some organic compounds as well. They included all the heavy metals, arsenic, cadmium, chromium, lead, selenium, silver, and mercury. There was only one detection out of the entire list. I don't know if you can see, but it's a long one. And that was lead, and it was well below the maximum detection limit for EPA's guidance. So, I think that's, you know, good information to have, and it should not be a concern that anything would be leaching into the groundwater from. O and M, to reiterate, we don't use any chemicals or pesticides for our operations, so no concerns there either. And just to reiterate, the elimination of the nine golf holes will be a significant decrease in chemical usage on the site, actually improve surface and groundwater quality. Property values, that's another item that people are concerned with in almost every instance we're building a project. And there's really no evidence or data showing that solar facilities impact surrounding property. Solar is not only sited on brownfields and landfills and superfund sites. There just aren't enough of those to, you know, offer, you know, less land for these projects. And many, many even in Connecticut, are in residential and rural areas on farmland throughout the state and throughout New England and, I believe, the country as well. And SEIA provided a fact sheet. I don't think I, don't have it in front of me, but just some data that's available. I believe that's a solar energy industry association, and I can forward that to Keith after any information I have I can. So, I think that's it, just for general impacts. And Mike can talk about the visibility, and if anyone has more questions about stormwater, there's a whole lot to discuss there as well. I'll hand it back.
I have one question at the present time.
Okay.
Why arborvitae? Why not native species? Arborvitae seems to be the tree of the week or month of the year. I mean, the deer like, I think if you put white pine or something more substantial, it's going to be there for 30 years, you might want to see something big. Arborvitae is a pretty boring tree. It just goes straight up. It's not a native tree. It's a landscaper's delight.
I think the intent was to, for consistency, to extend, there's a pretty high hedge there already, and that was, we just thought it would be logical to extend that hedge so it would be more uniform throughout, but...
I think it'd be a lot nicer if you took that down and put something nicer in.
Okay.
Oh, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, it's, it grows from the ground up because things like white pines, I have them all around my...
They grow fast. I planted them in 77, now they're 40 feet high and 25 feet wide, so they do quite well.
Okay. Thing we could consider for sure.
At this time, does any of the members have any questions at this time? Chuck, you there? What happened to Chuck?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I didn't unmute my mic. I apologize.
Yeah, you have any questions at this time?
I do. I do have a few questions. And it relates to the chemical constituents in the stormwater runoff and the chemical constituents in the manufacture of the solar arrays. And I just want to make sure I understand what was said because it sort of contradicts what we're hearing from the rest of the industry, that PFAS-containing materials are used in the manufacture of solar arrays. And that is what has given rise to the speculation that there could be a potential link between discharge that contains PFAS chemicals emanating from solar arrays. So, if you could just go over that, I think you said that, I understand the toxicity leaching studies that were done and everything, and that in actuality, you know, you only had a hit for lead and that that was below the threshold. But the portion of what you said about the manufacture does not involve any PFAS-containing materials, if you could just go over that in a little bit more detail.
You know, I was just told that the panels and the equipment don't contain the PFAS, that maybe, I don't know, I could, we could research it and find out and see if they're used during manufacturing since they're associated with surfactants that might be used to clean equipment in the manufacturing process. I could follow up with them and send Keith an email about that. I'm not sure how they're used. We can maybe check with EPA or do some more research on that and try and find out. But the panel, it's not an ingredient, not an ingredient, but a component of the panels themselves. Whether they're used during manufacturing, I can't answer right now, but we'd be happy to research that a little bit. And the panels don't come with an MSDS, a material safety data sheet, because they don't contain toxic or hazardous chemicals. So, if, I would think if there were PFAs in them, they'd be required to have a data sheet explaining how handling and response and, you know, disposal of them and use and, you know, just protection for installation. So, there, that would definitely be provided if it were necessary. So, we can look into that. I can reach out to the manufacturer again and send Keith an email about that.
Okay, I think that is the reference that I saw, at least, you know, in material that's available online. EPA is looking into this. Again, there are no positive conclusions or even any preliminary conclusions that speculate that there are PFAs in the runoff, but they are looking into this.
Yeah, my understanding is that there are certain industries that the standard was developed for, and it's fairly new. Within the last three years, four years, the labs have been working to develop protocols to test for it, and EPA is working on standards for it. But it's typically for industrial, production of industrial materials and chemicals. So, we can look into that further. So we can look into that further. Um, we haven't, before saying that, in, on the panels themselves, whether they're used during manufacturing, that's another question. And if they are used during manufacturing, it doesn't mean they're contained within the panels, you know, even in trace amounts. So we can do some more research on that also. I just did reach out to the manufacturer and they said there are no PFAs contained within the equipment. And I didn't ask whether they used them during manufacturing because it, wasn't sure the relevance of that. So we can follow up with them.
Okay. My concern is related to, to whether they're used in the manufacturer or whether they're actually present within the panels themselves, because we are creating sort of a perfect storm where, where we're, we're building large detention basins that, that if there is chemicals in, in the runoff, it's an ideal opportunity to put it into the, into the groundwater in these large detention bases. So, so that feedback would be very helpful to me. Thank you.
Okay.
Chuck, any other questions at this time?
No other questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, where are these panels made?
Um, you know, I'm not quite sure, actually. I'm not...
Are they made in China?
...are we, they're from, the, the panels that are spec are Canadian Solar, that's the company. I'm not sure if we're using those. That's something that's subject to change as we go, but something comparable might be used. I could find out as well where the plant is maybe coming from. I'm not sure.
Thank you. Ben, do you have a question?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Will there be mowing between the rows of panels if you're not going, you're only inspecting once a year? You must keep your underbrush down in front of the panels.
We do. There's limited mowing, but because it's the pollinator habitat, we allow it to grow. It's a meadow or a conservation mix, so there's limited mowing. I think it's twice a season. We don't have the O and M plan yet, but it would be low-growing pollinator species. The, the whole array mix is a low-growing seed mix.
This is Lynn Conway. I have a question. Um, so you said the fence around the westerly site was going to be, I think approximately seven feet, and the fence on the easterly site was going to be the same height. Is that correct? But just, it would have the privacy panels. My question is, given the height of the panels, the highest point, and the terrain, how much of the panels are seen over the fence line?
Um...
Maybe we were gonna cover that in the visual. I wasn't sure.
If you want to go over, I think we'll have to, it might explain more readily when we do the visibility piece, and Mike can go over that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do have one additional question, and it's for Mike.
Okay, I'm here.
Mike, Chuck Shan, thank you for the, the presentation. It was very informative, and I, I think the visuals were, were helpful. Could you put the map back up, that's the overall map, and show the closest proximity to private wells from the, from the each, the east and west side of the arrays?
Yeah, so we don't have, but, but let me, I will pull that up right now.
If you don't have the wells located, if you could just show the closest proximity to the residences?
So I'm gonna go into the overview map. So the closest residents, let's start with the westerly site, which is located here. The first residence is located basically up in this area here. So I would ascertain that their well is located behind or, you know, on either side of the house. Obviously, there is a separation distance that would be required, particularly if, I believe, all of these residents have onsite septic systems, so there is a separation that's required. So this would be the closest residence that's located up in this area here, which is a good couple of hundred feet away from the array. The other element to consider on this site is all of the residents is, that are located on North Anguilla Road, which are essentially up in this area, are all up gradient of the facility. So the topography in this area essentially runs from north to south. In other words, it drops off such that the, the low area of the site is located to the south, where primary, where the primary wetland complex is located down in here. Moving over to the easterly site, the closest of butters would be these two parcels that are located on Woodland Court. Each of those houses are located just off of the cul-de-sac that's located in here. Again, I do not have information on those wells, but we certainly, we certainly could provide that and provide what the, what the distances are to the facility on, you know, based on what's available from public record. Moving over towards the north of the facility, there, there are a couple of properties that are located up in this area as well.
Excuse me, Mike?
Yes.
I think, I think Woodland Court is on Westerly Water.
Okay.
Huh.
So they're served, so they're served by public water, so that, you know, that wouldn't be the case. There are a couple of residences that are located up in this area. Again, those, you know, those, those houses are several hundred feet away from the facility. And again, in terms of the location of their wells with respect to the proposed facility, we can certainly provide that information as well.
Are they down gradient of the detention basin or up gradient?
They are actually slightly up gradient of the detention basin. The only residence that may be laterally equivalent in elevation is located on the corner of North Anguilla and Elm Ridge Road, and that would be this corner property here. If you look at the topography, you know, it's, it's fairly equal. It, they, they actually might be slightly lower, actually, than the detention basin, but not by much. And again, the primary outfall from this basin, by the way, as I had mentioned earlier, is located down in this corner here, such that that water will drain down towards the wetland complex that's located here. One other thing to note about the detention basins, we are actually, in terms of the outlet control from the stormwater basins, those are actually gonna be a rear wall with a trapezoidal notch, and the bottom of that trapezoidal notch is actually locate, is, is about six inches above the bottom of the basin. So these facilities are intended to almost entirely de-water after a storm event. There's very little residual or detention time that's associated. In other words, these basins aren't gonna have, for example, several inches of water. That's not anticipated. It's anticipated that, you know, the, these basins will dry out. The typical requirement is for total de-watering within a seven, 72-hour time period, so that you don't have issues associated with standing water with, you know, mosquito habitat and whatnot.
Thank you, Mike. That answers my question.
Thank you.
Where are we at? Any other questions? At this time, I'd like to ask the neighbors who have questions and would like to talk to us. You're welcome to go in.
Did we, did you want to talk about the visibility assessment?
Yeah, go right ahead. How long is that gonna take? Is that a long one?
Mike, is it, did you be quick?
Yeah, I'll make it real quick. If I can, if I can take over screen control here for a moment. Just bear with me. So what I'd like to do is I'm actually gonna pull up... Okay. Everybody see that okay?
No. All we see is MG.
How about now?
Yep.
There you go.
Okay. So again, this is the ortho photo. This is the, Westerly site is located over here. This is the easterly site. What we did as part of our visual assessment is we, we tried to identify essentially the butters that would be most impacted in terms of visibility of the proposed facility. So what this map represents, and I'll jump into the actual before and after simulations, but this essentially shows, these blue arrows here actually show where the before and after simulations were taken, knowing that the, the properties that were identified to be most impacted and, from a visual standpoint, were the two properties on Woodland Court, located down in this area, and then the three residential properties located along the north side of North Elm Ridge Road. We did not do any visibility assessment for anybody on North Anguilla, simply, and again, these, these blue boxes represent the number of photographs that were taken looking towards the proposed facility, and it was determined that based on existing vegetation, trees, other obstacles that, you know, that those folks wouldn't actually see the facility. So these, all of these photographs, I believe Gina, if I'm correct, are available as part of the petition that was submitted to Siting Council. So what I will do is, and I may just have to jump around here, but, so what I'm, I'm pulling up right now, these are the before and after photographs. So this particular, what is, what is called View One, is taken right from this vantage point on North Elm Ridge Road. We're essentially looking south towards the proposed facility. So the before photo, as you can see, is, is quite obscured with vegetation. Believe it or not, there is, and you'll see in the subsequent photos, there is, the proposed facility is, is in the background here. And again, it's, it's very difficult to see, you know, because of the vegetation. And by the way, all of these photos were taken early to mid-spring, so, you know, the foliage really didn't have the full opportunity to come out. So it was really a good time to get an idea of what folks are gonna be looking at, you know, particularly during the periods when, when there's gonna be leaf off. View number two, this is actually taken from 258 Elm Ridge Road, and that's represented by this area, this view shed number two, for this property here. So the before, as you can see, they're, they're essentially just looking at the golf greens that are shown here. And then this is the after view. This is actually the fence line around the facility, and as you can see, it is tainted a little bit green, and that's really to show the privacy slats that are gonna be included with the chain link fence. So you virtually cannot see the panels themselves. And also, keep in mind that any of the existing vegetation on the golf course will be retained. This is a view number three, and to show you that on the overview map, that is the property that's located on the corner of North Anguilla and Elm Ridge Road, which is this vantage point right here. Again, the before, you know, you can see they're looking at the, the golf greens. And then this is the after photo. This is the proposed facility way up here in the background, which is actually gonna be behind the row of pines that currently exist on the golf course. Rolling into, these are, these last two simulations are looking at the proposed facility from the Woodland Court properties. So this is vantage point four, looking northerly towards the proposed facility. So this is the before, you know, essentially similar to the other photos, we're looking at the, the golf green. And then this is the after. And what we've tried to do in this particular view is actually add the proposed vegetation that would be provided along the fence line, and you can see that along the front of the fence. And by the way, we've, we've shown the plantings on, at the height that they actually would be planted. So essentially, over time, you know, the, the idea is that these would, would grow and, and essentially screen the fence itself. And then the last simulation is looking at from the, this property here on Woodland Court, essentially looking in a northwesterly direction. Again, we're looking at the existing fairway up in this area here. And then this is the after view. And again, this is, this is the proposed facility as it's gonna look in the background. And by the way, these were prepared on using actual photographs that were taken in the field. We use a program called SketchUp as well as Photoshop to actually simulate so that we can accurately scale, for example, from this property, which is a considerable distance from the facility. You know, the fence line, as it looks here, is actually properly scaled based on the model that, that's created with SketchUp. So that, that's essentially a summary of, of the visualization study that was conducted.
Thank you.
Question, question, Mr. Chairman? Mike, why, why wouldn't you plant more mature species in the beginning to, to screen the anchor fence? You know, the anchor fence as a vista from a residential property is, is not, you know, an ideal visual. Why wouldn't you plant more mature species to even screen the fence?
Well, the idea is to put in, and again, there are varying heights. We actually, in the plant set, we actually have a schedule in terms of what plantings need to be provided. Generally, the shrubs and the trees, they're gonna be planted. When they're planted, they're gonna be, you know, five to six feet high. You know, they're not gonna be little saplings some by any extreme. In the plant set, we actually, if you look on the, and if you'd like, I can actually pull that up, it actually shows a schedule of how large those plantings need to be when they're purchased, essentially.
Can I jump in? If I speak, people hear me? I'm guessing not. Oh, hi. This is one of the, the local residents. This is...
We'll get to everyone, all the residents after we finish our questions. We'll get to everyone, all the residents after we finish our questions.
Oh, fair enough. Thank you.
I'd like to see the planning schedule. And furthermore, there is no planting from the Elm Ridge roadside? You just see that fence all along?
Yeah. There is, there is going to be plantings that are going to be placed there.
When that bittersweet leaves go, you show us all the bittersweet along the walls. You can see everything in the winter, and that's six months of the year. So I mean, I think there should be something that screens out the fence year round. That fence is ugly. It looks like going to the dump. But I think we should like to see a planning schedule. If we had, if we had any say on it, that's what we would insist on.
Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
So this is, again, I'm, I'm jumping over to the easterly site. So the, the plants that are going to be provided, this is the northerly half of the facility. So these are the proposed plantings that are going to be placed along the fence line to the north here. So there is going to be some screening of the fence up in this area, particularly from these butters to the north. And then if we move.
The fence going south doesn't seem much around it.
Right here. So this is the southerly end, right in this area here that's going to get screened.
How about the western side?
I'm sorry?
How about the west side?
The west side is, is essentially all wooded. This is all wooded area over here. So you really cannot see on this side of the facility from North Anguilla Road because it's screened with the existing wooded area that's in this area here. So this is, this is actually the, the planting schedule that's shown on the plans here. I thought we actually, but we can provide that. Oh, here we go. So here's the, here's the, the height of the shrubs that, that need to be provided at planting. So you can see here, we've got some white firs that are going to be planted at six feet high, which is nearly the height of the fence. You know, we have some other species here that, again, are going to, when they're planted, they're going to be, you know, five to six feet high. So the issue with, once you get into much larger than that, and again, I'm not a landscape architect by trade here, but my understanding is the larger trees are, are difficult to manage in terms of longevity, whereas the smaller plantings generally survive better than, than the larger varieties do. So that's, that's essentially that in a nutshell.
Thank you.
I, I think that answers my question, Mr. Chairman. And in a way, I guess it contradicts a little bit what you said, Mike, that you probably won't see much of the fence in those areas on the south and northerly elevations if, if the plants are really five to six and eight feet tall.
Yeah, you may see portions of the fence, you know, in between the shrubs. You know, I, I, we can't deny that, I think. But, you know, certainly with the plantings, it's going to, it's, it's going to help soften the visual.
I noticed you had the one gallon things and the other, some of the things. Well, that, I mean, that's something you buy at the supermarket. I mean, we got to get a little bigger than that.
Yeah. And the idea is to plant a diverse variety of plantings. We don't necessarily like to stick with one specific species, again, to provide a, a mix of plantings. And those smaller varieties, by the way, would be interplanted between the larger trees to kind of help fill in the lower areas.
I'd like to see an instant forest. That's the way I like it. Anyway. Do you have anything else to say at this time? Any more questions from the members at this time?
Yeah, this is Ben Filbrick. I'm curious, Mike, will there be any fire prevention in the transformer rooms?
Gina, maybe you can answer that a little bit better than I can?
Um, do you mean, I'm not, I don't really, I'm not clear on the question.
It does say it could be fire suppression or built-in methods to keep fire from spreading outside the building in pads or electrical rooms.
Um, you know, I'd have to follow up on that. Is Jean-Paul on the call? No. Ryan, are you still on? Yeah, I'm not, you know what? I would have to follow up on that, but I'm not positive.
Okay, thank you.
All right. At this time, we'd like to invite the neighbors to participate. Try to go to Keith one at a time so we're not all talking at once.
But this one, I think, is pertinent because it relates to the recent conversation. And it comes from the fact that I'm.
Brian, would you ask your address, please?
Eighteen High Ridge, eighteen High Ridge Drive. And what I'm intrigued about is the juxtaposition, you know, of this facility to a golf course, especially the several fairways that, that really are quite adjacent to the array of solar panels. I'm assuming a lot of you on the call play golf. And wayward balls are a very common occurrence. Seven feet is not going to defend from a wayward drive. And golf balls are going to fly in the area. So my question is twofold. Are the panels robust enough to avoid damage? And if the answer is no, I can see some rather, you know, sinister move at some time in the future to increase the height of the fencing to guard the panels against the, you know, potential, you know, golf balls and obviously completely change the visual aspects of the, the proposition.
No, we did work, Mike, if you want me to take this one. In, in developing the design, we worked very closely with, with Alan Rusty on the design and, and where, you know, we pulled back, we looked at the direction people were, I'm not a golfer, so excuse me if I don't use the right term, the direction people are, are teeing off and the distance from the side. And we were leaving certain trees in areas that might be a potential risk for that. But there, we believe it's minimal. We have analyzed that, and it's something that would be ongoing. Wouldn't be a plan to increase the height of the fence.
So is that, is that a commitment that, that, you know, the size of the fencing and the panels and the, you know, the plantings in front of them will not be subject to, to future changes to mitigate, you know, damage to the panels?
No, that, that would have to go back to the Siting Council. If we were to change anything in the design, it would be, you know, we'd have to go through the process again. And that's not something we would plan to do. We haven't even discussed that at this time.
I mean, one of, one of the questions, one of the questions I do have, which is, which is more general, by the way, it, it intrigues me when you look at the, the layout of the golf course, that you've chosen to obliterate the red nine. I mean, I play the course fairly regularly. And I do, you know, not despair, but I'm saddened by the fact that the course is going to be, you know, significantly affected. But given visibility and proximity to residential areas, I mean, my gut says the white course is, is clearly the better choice. It runs along ninety-five almost in its, in, in its entirety. As far as I can see from the, from the maps that I'd look at, there would be no visual overlook. You know, given the fact it's, it's, you know, close to ninety-five. And who wants to live close to ninety-five? Was that ever considered?
We are utilizing the land that's available to us. I think that's a question for, you know, for the landowner.
Oh, actually, he's the one who's, who's determined what tract of land he would be amenable to offering for this project. Is that right?
Yeah, there were discussions. Ryan, are you on the call? Are you there? Ryan is from our business development department. I'm not sure if he's here.
This is Mike. I can chime in also is that, you know, as you were talking about the undeveloped land around I-95, one of the things to keep in mind is that we couldn't utilize that area because of the wetlands that are down in that area.
You mean down on the west. Yeah, that, I thought you were, okay, I didn't, I didn't realize you meant the west parcel. I thought you meant north of Elm Ridge Road.
Yes. Yeah, I, I, you know, my, my thought was, you know, the, the better tract of land would be, again, north on the, on the eastern side, which is where the, you know, the white course and the blue course, I think, extend. Because if you look there, there are very, I don't think there are any residences. And the white course especially runs right along ninety-five. You can actually see the highway as you're playing golf up there.
Hey Gina, this is Ryan Laneras with Greens Guys. I'm not sure if you can hear.
I can hear you.
Oh, you're good. Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm on the business development side and negotiate the real estate acquisition for, for the company and obviously in particular this, this location. There, there was a, an area that we've looked at. There are also significant wetlands at that location as well. Some of them were man-made and some of them are, are natural wetlands to a point where it would really affect not only the project, but even the access to get to the project itself. So there was significant encumbrances that we were up against. And the landowner also had an idea as, as to how to rearrange the twenty-seven hole golf course down to an eighteen hole golf course, which the current design appears to accommodate his, his model that, that, that works out. But we did, you know, we did look at it absolutely. And it just didn't, it didn't make sense for our current project.
Yeah, I suspect also, by the way, except I haven't the clue where those wetlands are, having cleared that, you know, that course, it never seemed to put my foot in the damp patch. But I do understand that the red course is the least favored course of the twenty-seven holes. So, you know, for the owner to maintain, I guess, his income, he would probably be most willing to sacrifice, you know, the red course rather than the other two. Or, you know, one of the other two.
Excuse me, this is Ben Filbrick. If I may jump in, Brian. Most manufacturers of solar panels use a safety glass with a film in it. So if a golf ball does hit it, it shatters like your windshield. And nothing comes out of it and water doesn't go in. It's a safety glass.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. I certainly wasn't concerned about the damage to the panel per se. But I can see, you know, if I'm the Greens Skies and I'm losing a panel a week, you know, due to golf ball damage, I'm going to get the hell out of there and get that fence raised. I mean, if you go to any driving range, you know, that are both residential or, you know, a highway, the fences are, I'm guessing, twenty-four feet high. I mean, they're way up there, you know, to, you know, to defend, you know, the surroundings from, from errant golf balls. I mean, I only hit about one fairway in every three balls. And I'm, you know, fairly long hitter. I'm going to be hitting some of those panels, I'm pretty sure from time to time.
I'm not a golfer, so I'm well.
Seven, you know, seven feet is very, very low. I mean, it's, you know, from, from a, a defense against damage. I mean, and obviously if, if, I mean, my concern disappears in its entirety. You know, that, you know, for future, you know, visual impact. But obviously twenty-four foot fence would be very significant around the edge of that facility. You know, it would affect a lot more people, I think. And I can, I, I don't know how much the panels cost, but, but certainly if the plan is whenever they're damaged, we'll just replace them and accept that loss, then I don't have any issue.
Yeah, that is, I don't know if you want to talk about it too. It is something that we considered. We do have, you know, regular O and M costs that are built into the project. And there is insurance. I'm not sure if that, that covers damage. But there's also the possibility of working with the landowner and reassessing and redesigning some of the holes if it becomes an issue. That's, you know, an ongoing discussion. But we have not even discussed extending the fence. And we wouldn't do that because a higher fence could start affecting shading of the facility as well. So, you know, that's not something we've even discussed at this point.
Are there other examples, by the way, of solar facilities mixed in with, with, with golfing land? I mean, is it, is it a common occurrence?
This is Ryan Laneras again with Greens Guys. We, we actually have built a lot of ground mounts next to baseball fields at, you know, budding schools where a lot of times the, the kids will foul tip the ball or we're in the area where the home run is, and sometimes the ball will go over the fence. We've never actually had an, an issue with, when a, when a softball or a baseball hits, hits the panel. And that's, you know, some data that we've sort of relied on when calculating the risk, risk reward for this particular project. But we do, as Gina had mentioned, we, we're carrying insurance for this. And we do have a twenty-five year warranty on the panels. So there's a lot to fall back on in the event that this does continue to reoccur. We had made sure that our insurance policy would cover it for us.
Thank you.
So, so just one last question before, before I leave. If I can monopolize the floor again. I'm intrigued as to the twenty-year lifespan of the facility. Is, is, is the plan ultimately to decommission it after twenty years? Is that a given? Or is the plan, you know, to keep it, maintain it essentially in perpetuity?
Um, we, you know, we do have a twenty-year powered contract with the utility. And we have a twenty-year lease agreement with the landlord. There are renewal options at, at the end of that, but we won't have any, you know, anyone to really sell the power to. So that creates an issue on our end since we were generating power without any real guaranteed revenue stream. So it is a, it's a risk that we'd have to calculate a few years in advance prior to potentially renewing that option. And the landowner also has the ability to say no and, you know, pack up and leave. And he could do whatever, you know, he, he wants to do with the property again.
So, so Eversource is presumably committed to buy power from you for the twenty years, twenty-year duration. That's a solid commitment.
That's correct. And that's why we, we have to structure the lease agreement with the landowner at the, basically the equivalent term.
Yeah. I mean, I did have a, you know, one of those sort of, you know, sinister, sinister questions. What if Eversource, after ten years decides they're not interested, you know, they've made alternative arrangements that makes taking power from you unprofitable? You haven't yet recovered your investment until you walk away from it and leave it as a, as a board anchor, essentially, just sitting there rotting. But it sounds like you've got a commitment for twenty years, so that would not be an issue, correct?
Right. I mean, that would be a breach of contract on, on their end. And given that they're, you know, an investment grade purchaser of, of our power, it sort of gives significant surety that, you know, we and they will, will continue to be able to continue doing business throughout that life of the contract.
Is there any, by the way, relationship with China in all of this? I mean, I did read some historical information that mentioned it was, you know, Greens Skies is a partnership with a, you know, a Chinese, you know, corporation or Chinese. I don't know whether it was hearsay or whether it was, it was bona fide information. But, you know, the whole concept really is security, having, you know, Chinese investment in, in American power infrastructure seems to me would, would be an issue that would have to be dealt with.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, the Greens Skies itself was created by five local businessmen from the town of Westbrook, Connecticut. And that was almost a decade ago. That business developed to what it is today, which is a nationwide solar development company. They had since sold the, the business. They had since sold the, the business to Clean Focus Inc., which is based out of San Francisco with a parent company, U R E, based out of Taiwan. And that was three years ago. Even up until now, the, the, the company was actually purchased around eight months ago by JLC Infrastructure, which is based out of dual headquarters in Los Angeles and, and New York. And they are an American-based company. So there no longer is, I guess, Chinese Thai was never actually a thing. It was Taiwanese for a certain period of time. But the company has since been purchased, actually, after the fact.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you, Ryan. George Rizendys.
Yep, George Rizendys, five fairway court. I just wanted to go back to the visualization study for a minute. If I remember correctly, when we were talking about the solar panels, I, I think it was stated that the front of the panels would be about three feet off the ground. The back of the panels were eight feet. The fence is seven feet. I, I find it hard to believe that when you look at the visualization studies, you don't see the panels over the top of the fence. There seems to be a little bit of a disparity in those visualization studies. Am I incorrect in terms of those facts?
Yeah, so this is Mike Gagnon from Melona McBroom. That's seven feet, that's represent, or seven to eight feet. That's approximate on at the back of the panels. It certainly is not greater than eight. But, you know, at the, at the worst case, you may see that the tips are the rarer, the panels, particularly if you're close. But, you know, through the visualizations, you know, we are at a, at a considerable distance. I can try to zoom in and actually show you what that would look like.
And Mike, could I chime in for a minute? On the southern end, I believe there's a wider gap. Aren't the, aren't the panels 30 feet from the fence on the southern end?
That's correct.
So there was an extra buffer there inside the fence line? So there's setback.
All right. The other question I had is, you know, being, we're over on Fairway Court. I noticed that on the east side, there seems to be nothing in terms of plantings or whatnot along that east side of the fence. It's just the fence. And so, you know, certainly from the properties that are on Fairway Court, you're going to have a view of that. And we're not that far away. We're only, you know, 600 feet, 650 feet, which is not, you say a considerable distance, but it's really not that far when you think about it.
The plantings do wrap around the east side of the fence. Do you have that photo again?
Yeah, it only goes a slight way up as it curves around. It doesn't go the full view.
Well, there's existing, it, it wraps around to meet the existing shrubs that'll remain that we're not removing and, and trees that are there.
Okay, it's not, that's not clear on the sketch, to tell you the truth.
So this is the, if everybody can see this, this is the, this, the visualization from Six Woodlawn Court. So here's the proposed vegetation. Essentially, right about in this area is where the fence, or maybe it's here, actually starts to go easterly. And this is the vegetation that would be, be planted along the easterly side. And then as you move further, there's, there's actually existing persythia shrubs in this area here that will help to, to mask the, the view of the fence. Now going to the earlier question, if you zoom in and, and I apologize for maybe any distortion, but you could see right over in this area here, we're actually depicting the, the very top of the panels shown here. This is actually above the top of the fence. And as I had mentioned earlier, you know, the visualization was prepared so that it, it was at scale, at the distance of the, where the vantage point is taken. If that answers your question.
Yep. Thank you.
But again, going back to the persythia, after the persythia that are there, it looks like pretty much the fence is in pure, in plain view. So if you go back to your persythia shot?
Yep.
Beyond that.
Yeah, so this is the fence line that's up, way up towards the, the facility, up in this area here.
Right. Well, to the best of our knowledge, no one did a visualization study from the Fairway Court properties because there, there's a completely different vantage point, which actually is pretty much right there. So there, there certainly is a visual impact there as well. And so we just, we, we are concerned about that because it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I also wanted to respond to Mr. Sheen's point. My reading of the submission of the site, siting council says that Green Skies hasn't actually decided definitively which panel that they're using. Gina, is that accurate?
Yeah, we typically spec, Ryan, are you, are you aware of this? On every project, if it's not that one, it would be comparable. It would be the same design, the height, the tilt, the orientation to a portrait. Sometimes it's sort of what's available at the time, but it would be, you know, something that would be equivalent to that. So I guess.
I guess it's the definite equivalent that I'm concerned about because I, you know, Mr. Sheen raised some very good points about, you know, possible contamination or what the panels are made of. And so the fact that they can be substituted in a comparable, I think it's the definition of comparable that was.
Well, they would only be substituted for the type of panel. It's the same, you know, bifacial polycrystalline, same materials that would be in any other. And there isn't a plan for that at this point, but it would be an equivalent panel that would have the same materials. It would be composed of the same material. You know, to reiterate, would contain any hazardous or toxic chemicals that are not leach.
And this is Ryan Linares again with Greens Guys. We, we hold that steady, that consistent for every project that we submit only because of, if market conditions do change, we'd like to be able to not be stuck with a company that might be pricing the panels too high. So we do go out to bid and look for, as Gina mentioned, the, the equivalent panel for a few different manufacturers when, and at the time when the project's ready to proceed to procurement of materials.
Yeah, if there's no bait and switch going on, we can assure you that.
Well, I, I mean, you know, we really appreciate the board's opportunity, or the opportunity the board has given us to address. But, you know, I, I still have grave concerns about the placement of a utility facility of almost 10,000 panels. I mean, no matter how we cover it, it, it still is what it is. 10,000 solar panels smack dab in the middle of a residential area. This will absolutely, most certainly impact the character of the town. And I'm not convinced that it doesn't have the potential to have a negative impact which is, which is a big concern. Certainly these have been cited beyond brown sites, as Ms. Wolfman said, because there aren't enough of them around. But the EPA still recommends that they not be placed on open greenfields. So, I mean, and we know that they're also doing research in terms of what it's made of. My worry is, is that because these have not historically been cited in residential areas, we really don't know the impact on the health and wellness of surrounding residents. And that, that concerns me. And the other thing that concerns me is that when we met with town officials, there was sort of a resignation in terms of kind of a hands throwing in terms of, well, there's nothing that we can do. And while I understand that the siting council is a formidable force and they are very autonomous, I also think that, you know, total surrender by the town is a little bit premature. Town officials indicated to me that they expect that there will be many more proposals. And my position is that I think we need to take a stand now to protect, you know, our cherished character of the town. And I, I think that we have to be more particular about the citing. There was a lot of conversation and a lot of discussion about protecting the public view. But residents are part of the public as well. And I just, I'm not convinced that enough has been done. As I said, to the best of our knowledge, there was no one that did a visualization study from either of the Fairway Court properties. The, the timing of this in the middle of the pandemic is also a concern. The owner of the golf course had said that this would not be moving forward until after the pandemic, you know, had been resolved. Obviously, that's not the case. But, you know, essentially we have a conglomerate and, and we know where the origins are, but that's not most relative. What we know is that, you know, essentially they, they have a job to do and they're looking for the least expensive, most economic place to put it. And certainly the landowner has understandable business motives as well. And I would say that at the very least, what we're asking the town to do is request the siting council, give an extension so that we have time to, to answer some of the questions that we have that have been raised during this meeting. And also to really look at what is the visual impact for everybody. So that's what I'm respectfully requesting. We, this has all happened within two months. And I just don't feel like the citizens of the town of Stonington are really aware of the proliferation of this type of solar facility in our town. And so I would ask respectfully that the town at least ask for a delay by the siting council to act on this.
We were discussing, Keith and I were discussing it today. We're going to try to get an extension.
Thank you. That would be terrific.
I have to go lock up my chickens. So I gotta leave for a minute before they come get them. Will someone take over? I'll be back in about 10 minutes.
Mr. Fairman, Mr. Fairman, this is Carl Careley.
Ben, you can take over.
Thank you. So thank you, Mr. Fairman and members of the [inaudible]. My name is Carl Careley and I live six Fairway Court with my wife Christine and our teenage daughter Lauren. And we've enjoyed living in Stonington since, since 1994. Our daughter Lauren's enrolled in the Stonington School System. So we're well entrenched and really love our community. And as in my, in my letter, I do have great concern about the placement of the plant. You know, I am not, just to be clear, and I think I speak for my neighbors as well. We're not opposed to solar energy. And we understand that there may be some potential revenue or other benefits to the town with this project. My, my primary concern is just the placement in a residentially zoned area. I mean, there may find a loophole, in my opinion, a loophole place that's here. But residential to me means homes and families. It doesn't mean power plants. So that's my primary concern, the placement. But I think there are also some safety risks with chemicals. I did some checking and the majority of panels manufactured in the world today are made in China. And China does not have an EPA. So, you know, there weren't supposed to be chemicals in dog food and cat food and makeup, but we all know that that's, I, I just don't have a lot of confidence in what's actually in these panels. There are some, if I could just share my screen here briefly. You know, there, there is a cancer biologist, David Wing, PhD, who has some articles, I'd be happy to forward this to folks if they'd like, about some of the challenges with chemicals in, in these, these photophytic cells made in most likely China. And as, as Ms. Wolfman so eloquently indicated at the beginning when she was talking about the cost of recycling or taking care of these solar panels at the end of the life cycle, she said, they haven't been in service long enough to really know. So to me, that means they haven't been in service really to know to answer any of these long-term safety concerns, any potential effects on, about radiation. They, they said that high tension wires didn't give off radiation and a lot of families unfortunately are dealing with cancer now as long-term exposure, you know, to, to these, basically to these unknowns that are out there. And I also do have a concern about the negative effect on home values as well. You know, in the, I'm going to share just one other film, which is a screenshot. When you look at how close this facility is, there's a home here, there's a home here, there's a home here. This is where I'm living right now with our teenage daughter. I don't really think that that's a lot of space. I mean, there's another, another slide which actually shows the homes that are, they're so close. This is, this is not 600 feet. This is 100, I don't know, 150, 200 feet tops. And to me, that's, with all the unknowns of safety, that's, that's really, really quite concerning that this has to be put in a residential area. It, it just seems to me that that, that's very, very unfortunate and inappropriate. You know, I think, I, I just think of it, how nice this could be as an open space, as a, as a nice nature trail or a bike path. I don't think there are any of those in, in the area. If this were to be, you know, save this open space and then, you know, possibly move this to a commercial space. I wouldn't have a problem with a commercial space away from families and, and children. But in, in fact, my, my neighbor's concerns, this is so rushed during a pandemic. With respect to Mr. Gagnon, Ms. Wolfman and Mr. Linares, I don't know if they live in Stonington or not, but, you know, we're the ones who are going to be living with the consequences of this for the next 20 or more years. So I would just ask at minimum to delay this and, and till we can get more information, maybe meet in person, get more answers. And if possible, seek a mutually beneficial, beneficial solution and put this in a commercially zoned area, really where it belongs. That's my concern. So thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thank you, Carl. Is there another citizen ready to say?
Hi, this is Randy Lee and David Lee. We live, live at one Fairway Court on Pocketuck. And we've been here since this place was built. I totally agree with what my neighbors have said. I do not want to waste time reiterating, your time is precious. But I just want to speak also on fact of the entire area of the lower section was kind of poo-pooed. The miners' properties, they have five properties that are very close proximity to the lower section. And they are all on wells. And they verify that the vernal pools down in that area are significant, very active. And that is why our Stonington Land Trust bought the entire area to the south of that property to protect those vernal pools and the Guilla Brook Streamway. So this is something that should not be poo-pooed. It is significant, something that will be permanently affected should something happen with these panels that the company does not realize at this point can happen because they haven't been around long enough. So I just, on their behalf, I wanted to say something. I'm just very concerned that this whole thing can just totally open up Stonington to have more where people don't want to see them. And there will be nothing Stonington can do because they allowed this to happen. Imagine driving down North Main Street, three acres there, 10 acres, whatever. I mean, this is Pocketuck, but trust me, it will happen throughout the rest of the town. So please put in for an extension and let's try to fight this together. We can do this. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else like to speak up? Anyone else like to speak up?
I may just have one additional question or ask one additional question. Um, will Greenskies put in writing that they will not expand upon their currently proposed footprint to other parts of the golf course?
I can't hear. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I had said, will, will Greenskies guarantee and put in writing that they don't wish to expand to other areas of the golf course besides their currently proposed footprint?
Uh, I can't comment on that at this time. Brian, are you still there?
Yes, Ryan's here. Um, again, I, I I tend to agree that, that right now, there, there are absolutely no plans for expansion, nor does um, the current landowner, you know, he expects to operate that, that new 18-hole golf course. Um, it, it will, it will require a significant amount of work on his end to even uh, you know, complete that 18-hole golf course and, and readjust it. So I can imagine um, that would be something that, that he'd be interested in at this time.
Respectfully though, so that is a no, that you will not guarantee that they will not expand upon the current footprint?
Um, I can't, I, I personally can't make a, a, you know, exact comment like that. Um, you know, on behalf of the, the company nor the, the, the landowner.
So with, with that thought in mind, do you, do you guys have um, other plans uh, to create similar facilities in and around Parketuck Stonington? Um, and, and hoping that, that approval of this precedent will give you, you know, pretty much a green light to go forward um, without um, limitation?
Uh, there, there are no plans at this time within the Parketuck um, section of Stonington um, to, to develop.
I think we should just keep these comments to this sighting so we can keep moving along. We have a full agenda.
I'm back.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kevin Torres. I live at 52 High Ridge Drive uh, in Parketuck, in the same neighborhood. I'm not gonna take up all of your time. I just want to put in so that it, it does add in. I agree with my neighbors. I don't want this in our neighborhood in a um, residential area um, for all the same reasons that they've mentioned. Um, and I can leave it at that. I hope this would be an extended further investigation and ultimately not allowed to go forward.
Anyone else like to speak?
I just have one other thing. Uh, we do have a petition. And I just wasn't sure, do you guys want to see a copy of it?
That, that can go to the Siting Council, not, not to us.
Okay. I mean, it was very hard with the pandemic to have a petition. Um, we had to do it virtual, which a lot of people didn't understand how to do. It's just with COVID and limitations and not being able to have um, a lot of meetings. We did what we could. Uh, we're just hoping you will work with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time?
Oh, yes. This is Albert Crispacker. I live at 17 High Ridge Drive.
Yes, Albert.
I would like to know, I would like to know at the end of the useful life of this project, who will bear the cost of removing all of this?
Um, Greenskies.
And how will that be accounted for in the beginning?
Um, Greenskies bear that cost.
And, and what, and what, and such, and such a way? What way would that be? Do you put a bond? Is, is there a bond up for the, the funds necessary to do that?
There, uh, there is surety language within our lease agreement with the existing landowner since he had um, a similar concern. Um, so we, we decided to hold a surety account with his, his ability to access uh, capital in the event that um, we don't um, you know, remove the panels at, at time, at that time of event and he could allocate that capital to go remove it on his own. Uh, so that was a, you know, he, he shared the same concern and he um, requested that that be in, you know, in the lease agreement.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, I had a problem with the first connection. Hi, my name is John Pistoles. I live at 5 Arbor Court, Parketuck, Connecticut. I also represent the High Ridge Homeowners Association. I'm the president. And I'd also say that I have roughly about 27 years in the pharmaceutical industry. And I've dealt with regulatory authorities throughout my career. And Greenskies uses uh, a language like seems to be in compliance. They verbally indicated the panels contain no PFAs. Panels do not contain hazardous or toxic materials. It would come with MSPs. That's all vague language. It is not definitive. For one thing, the panels would not come with MSPs. How many computers have we bought and how many boxes have we opened to find an MSDS? They contain hazardous and toxic materials. Everybody knows that. I also say the zoning board uh, should take these, you know, uh, hazardous materials and, and really dive into them. Uh, because they're there, they're inside the panels. If the panels break, they will land on the ground and go into our groundwater. That's clearly documented in a lot of the research. And I also ask Greenskies directly, uh, you know, zoning board asks where the panels are manufactured. You know, another vague answer. Uh, my question is, where do the panels manufacture? Where were the panels manufactured for other projects that you installed? And that's a question.
We purchased panels throughout all across the world. Uh, right now, our, our number one provider, just based off cost and high efficiency on the, on wattage, is the Canadian Solar. Um, it's our, under, our, our understanding um, that where they manufacture those is in Canada and likely um, in Europe and potentially in Asia as well. Uh, but I can't uh, make a definitive uh, response to that as to exactly where um, the panels are going to be manufactured when we go procure them um, after, after the, you know, project has its permits and we're in a position to actually go procure. Um, we're not sure, you know, if it will be Canadian Solar, so we can't make a firm commitment to that yet um, because the market could change.
Right, but I mean, even if you say Canadian Solar, that could be, I'm gonna call it a, a distributor or maybe a manufacturer, but those panels could be made in Asia. Is that correct?
Uh, potentially, yep. Um, the Asian um, manufacturers have a, do have a high-quality product um, with a high, high efficiency rate. Um, so.
Well, we could talk, we could talk about high-quality products because, you know, they may make a high-quality product, but they, you know, there's a history of polluting the environment over there that is amazingly strong. So yes, they'll give you a very cheap, a very cheap product, but they're killing their citizens in doing it. We all know that also.
Oh. With all due respect, of most, yeah, a lot of, most of what we buy is from overseas and Asia or like, and everything in your, you know.
Well, I mean, we could buy Tesla panels. Those are made in Buffalo, New York. Right?
Well.
It's quiet on the phone. I don't know why.
I know it is.
I'm sorry.
We're not, it's not our.
It's not a recommendation.
I, I, some of this will have to go to the Siting Council. We can't answer all these questions.
Well, I mean, but they're supposed to be able to answer the questions. Okay, do the panels, are the panels you all listed?
Excuse me?
I can't hear.
We've lost you.
Are the panels UL listed? Underwriter Laboratories listed?
There's, if you look in, you can look in the electrical drawings that are in Appendix B and it provides all the certifications for the panels that are specified and all kinds of information. There's a spec sheet that you can review and answer many of.
Simple question.
Yes, they are UL listed.
Okay, okay. Uh, you say that uh, the uh, let me see, PB into description. They, you say these panels do not contain any hazardous or toxic materials. Uh, my research indicates most are toxic materials inside these panels. How, how, you know, bridge that gap?
What's definition of hazardous that you're using?
Well, toxic is, 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 well, I mean, those are EPA-registered materials.
Well, if you quest, put a request in to the Siting Council, we can come up with a more specific list of the components of, of the materials.
So you, you actually have the material certification for these uh, panels, or you will have?
Yeah, we can look, research, do some more research on the type of panel that we would be using.
But again, yeah, I mean.
Feel free to comment to the council and they'll provide comments back to us that we respond to.
These should be all answers you have at this point. You're about ready to execute a project. And you've executed projects in the past. This had to come up.
No, it hasn't actually.
Then the public is not aware of what's going on in, in terms of PB technology. And we happen to be aware.
These are questions will have to be taken care of by the Siting Council.
Appropriate to that company. We're on the.
I, I real, I realize this. I'm just here to tell you that there are gaps in this analysis that I think the town of Stonington should be aware of. And those gaps need to be uh, you know, thought about hard by this committee and actually a strong letter of, of recommendation against citing this particular project in our town is required. And again, I wrote a very pinpoint uh, you know, uh, position paper regarding this. We have a hun, now we have 115 people on a petition that are opposing this particular project. Those are town residents, people both, you know, affected by this project and people that are not affected by this project. And yes, we don't have 115 people on, on this particular call. But if this was an open forum and where we could get the public involved, but we can't because of COVID-19, we would have a lot of people and a lot of people would be very passionate about this particular project, zoning board. And that's all I'd like to say.
Okay, thank you. We've tried our best to do it with what we have available to us now. Is anyone?
But we do, do expect you.
We hear you. Uh, is that?
Can you make a commitment? Can you make a commitment that you'll send a letter to the Siting Council before July 5th? And tell them to put the project on hold?
I think we're gonna ask for an extension. That's a, rather than July 4th. For, for, it was only three days for us to get a letter together. So I, we're gonna try to get an extension. Yes, we will talk to them.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Chairman, uh, I, I'm, I'd suggest that, that we, we do send, you know, I'm concerned with the significant gaps that, that we've identified, that you've heard about from the, from the concerned neighbors. And um, and that we write a, a strong letter uh, and highlight the significant gaps in the analysis. Uh, we, we talk about the, the, these issues, the Fairway Court visual study gap, the water quality issues linked to the potential manufacturing materials uh, in yet-to-be-identified solar panels, potential water quality issues. Uh, there are alternatives, locations on the site uh, which don't appear to have been explored fully. Uh, there are potential vernal pool issues. Uh, there are quality uh, issues associated with the location, height of the straining. Um, there uh, uh, are uh, this is located in the heart of a single-family neighborhood. It's incompatible with the surrounding uses. Uh, and we need additional time to uh, and the last thing would be that, that there, there probably should be a water quality testing program implemented along with this project if it does move forward. And lastly, that there should be a surety bond in place to guarantee the, the ultimate removal. Uh, and, and the, the town should be protected under that surety bond, not necessarily leaseholders. So, so these things, I think, form the basis of, of significant gaps in the analysis that, that we request an extension so that we can work uh, more closely with the applicant to try to resolve them. Um, and uh, I, I think they form the basis of a very hard-hitting letter in request of an extension.
Thank you. What are the other members of the commission feeling?
Now, this is Ben. I agree with Chuck's analysis and uh, synopsis.
I agree with Chuck too. I think we should, you know, dig a little deeper.
Yeah.
This is Lynn. I agree, and I also think, you know, uh, the point about the timing of making the decision, you know, I think we need to emphasize that uh, you know, I don't know what the usual turnaround time for this type of thing is, but uh, it definitely is not appropriate during these times and we need to, we need to have that time as well.
Thank you. Uh, Keith?
I'm here.
Can you get together with Chuck and, and try to get this letter out and contact him? It's like tomorrow and see what we can do?
Sure, sure, we can do that.
Is, is that right with you, Chuck?
Absolutely. I've already got this, this started. Uh, I was writing it while we were, we were listening. And while I was, I was speaking to the applicant as well. So, so I'll work with Keith tomorrow on the letter.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
And um, I'll also point out that just this afternoon, I sent the commission, um, the comments we received from our engineering consultant, which mostly dealt with stormwater issues. Um, they had some comments on that. Um, it all seemed to be things that could be addressed uh, with either more information or with modifications to the plan, but were enhancements to the um, stormwater management plans. Um, and these were, these were just sent to the applicants also. Could they be included with our letter? Yeah, we can do that. Great, thank you.
Will the commission be copied on this letter that's sent?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So in other words, I will get an email. What is exactly sent?
That's right. Yeah, we'll, we'll CC all the members or anybody else who's interested.
Okay, thank you.
I thank you, all the neighbors and participating tonight. You helped us uh, understand, learned a lot. And we'll, we're working forward to working with you.
Keith, can I, this is Lynn. Can I just make one other suggestion and that is that the letter is posted on the P&amp;Z website so that people can go in and, and look and see it that way?
It's a good idea.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be good for people so that they can see, see that it's been addressed and referenced.
We're not ignoring this project, even though we, we will write a good letter, but that's, that's the best we can do. Just hope for the best. Thank you. You wanna take a break? You wanna keep moving?
I vote for keep moving.
Okay. Uh, Keith?
Sure, well. Going to our administrative review items. We've got uh, item 4D1, 20107ZON, Horses Healing Humans, Jeremy Ostrow. Zoning permit application for construction of a 22-by-48 greenhouse structure. 340 New London Turnpike, assessor's map 138, block 3, lot 1, zone GBR 130. So for those of you unfamiliar, Horses Healing Humans, they're a nonprofit organization that offers equine-assisted therapy to people with um, physical, cognitive and emotional challenges. The site was given a special use permit by, by the com- The site was given a special use permit by the commission in 2015 to operate there. What they're proposing is a 22-foot-by-48-foot greenhouse, about 75 feet to the southwest of the existing house and office building. It'll be used as part of the organization's therapeutic programming, along with the organization, The Lighthouse, which has a similar mission. Conforms with the bulk and use requirements of the GBR 130 zone. Greenhouses are specifically allowed as an accessory use in the GBR 130 zone. Received comments from the fire department and Ledge Light that they were okay with the greenhouse there.
Any comments on this application? Do I hear a motion on this application?
Make a motion to approve the application that is submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 5D2, 20118ZON, AAAA Trust LLC, Shurenzia and Associates. Zoning permit application for site modifications and renovation of existing mixed-use building, including the addition of upper-story dormers and rear deck. Property located at 44 Williams Ave, Mystic, assessors map 161, block 17, lot 9, zone LS5. This is the building that is the old location of Windjammer Liquors. There's an existing apartment on the upper story. There's no specific use identified for the commercial space at this time. And the upper story will still remain one dwelling unit. What they're looking to do is expand the roofline on the third floor with shed dormers that allow for some additional living and attic space. The commercial space won't be expanded. As far as the site modifications, they're adding two parking spaces where some of the grass is back there, removing the existing shed. And they're adding some landscaped areas. The application conforms to the LS5 zoning district. It's in the FEMA AE flood hazard area. Plans and cost estimates have been reviewed by the town's floodplain manager and building official and appear not to trigger substantial improvement. When they apply for a building permit, that'll also be reviewed in detail by the building official. And the recommended stipulation here is that building improvements shall conform to all relevant flood hazard requirements. On the applications, engineer and architect are on the call if you have any specific questions for them.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. This is Ben. Keith, I'm confused. Is this expanding the second-floor apartment or making a second apartment?
It is only expanding the area of the existing apartment.
Thank you.
So there's no additional apartment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion on this application?
Will we approve the-
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't get my mic off mute fast enough. You know, can somebody throw up the rendering? I just am having trouble with my screens. Was there an architectural rendering of the shed dormer?
Yeah.
It's in the package.
There it is.
Yeah, I was just having trouble bringing it up.
There it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a motion on this. Do I have a second?
Move we approve the application that AAA Trust LLC, Shurenzia and Associates, subject to the condition that Keith enumerated earlier.
Do I hear a second? I heard a second somewhere.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both aye.
All right, so under Old Business, item 6A is PZ2006SD and GPP, D6 Realty LLC. Their Hayward subdivision and groundwater protection permit applications for a free split and subdivision of 1.13-acre lot. Property located at 3 Country Lane, Parketuck, assessors map 21, block 1, lot 3, zone RA20. Mr. Hayward is here as part of this, and I'm going to try to put the plan on the screen. But bear with me here.
What we get is garden.
I'm here. I'm here.
That's all we got. You said the plan.
I'll mute myself. Does that help?
No, I'm trying.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
Sorry, can we, you can see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to try to zoom in a little. This is harder than it looks when other people do it.
Okay.
And Art, are you there?
I am. Were you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. I'm going to keep this brief. You had a long night already. So the summary in your file says, I have a copy of it from prepared by planning staff. It's a piece of property that's located in Country Lane and it joins the Gulf Coast, Elm, Elmwood, Gulf Coast. There's an existing house. What we proposed to do was to do a free split, and then, which is allowed by Rite, and the subdivision of one additional lot. There are two rail lots. We received approval from the ML Wetlands Commission, located driveway. There were no filling of wetlands required. And it's pretty, very unremarkable, actually. It's a site, you know, two houses plus the existing house. It's in the open space. We require or requested fee in lieu. We've had a licensed appraiser do an appraisal, which I will be forth sending to staff later. Really don't think there's much more to say, actually.
I have a question.
Yeah.
My name is Ben. So the driveway is sticking to the, I think it's the north side of the property?
That's correct.
It's a separate entrance than the original house by the road?
That, well, that's a sort of a U-shaped driveway. It is, it's opening is actually in part where part of the driveway for the original house is.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? It's twice, double the size lot or rear lot, correct?
That's correct. They have to be either double the area or 60,000 square feet, whichever is greater. And these have to be 60,000 square feet or greater.
Any questions from the commission?
One quick question, Mr. Chairman. Art, Chuck Sheen, will this involve an easement? Because it'll be a single driveway serving both rear lots?
Yes, it will. There'll be a right-of-way easement granted across lot number 3 to the rear lots. So lot number 1 would, lot number 2 would have also an easement across that portion where the driveway splits and serves the house to the southwest corner. So there'll be an easement across the driveway from Country Lane up to where it splits. And then one would go to one house and the other would go to the other house.
I see that. Very good. I want to compliment you on these plans. I think you did a great job in a small space of detailing all of this and that it's very easy to read. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion on this application?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, but in here, we did get comments after the report came out. Positive comments from both the town's engineering consultant and Ledge Light Health District. So no outstanding issues there that were mentioned in the report. The decisions here, there's also a decision for the subdivision waivers requested. And those are for, I believe, sidewalks along the frontage, which would not make sense here. And also for submission of a drainage report, which is something that our engineering consultant didn't feel was necessary in his review. There's also, it looks like I wrote it wrong in the report here. It's a groundwater protection application, not a coastal area management application. Another one of the votes there. And the subdivision itself. We have seven recommended stipulations that were listed in the staff report. We don't need number one anymore. There were eight. We don't need number one anymore, so now we're down to seven. I can summarize that if you're, you want, or maybe you're already familiar with them.
Go ahead.
What's listed as number two, but would be number one, is that final plan shall include new street address and assessors not lot numbers assigned by the town. Number three is the standard language about giving the town either the AutoCAD files to update the tax maps or a fee in lieu of that. Number fee, number four is the standard language about the fee in lieu of open space that'll be due to the town and the lien that's necessary for that. Number five is the requirement for an erosion and sedimentation control bond, just to guarantee that there won't be any issues when this is constructed. Number six is right-of-way easements for the shared driveway to record those along with the final plans. Number seven, the proposed shrub shall be selected and installed under the auspices of a wetland scientist, which was something the application stated. And number eight, a specific thing, just that the steps in the stoop on the southern side of the existing house shall be modified to conform to the new side setback requirement prior to the recording of final plans. The way the new property line is drawn, the steps will infringe on it a little bit. And the applicant has said that there's enough room where they can cut that back prior to this being done.
So I have a motion on this application.
Do we have to move the waivers first, Mr. Chairman, or can they be included with the motion to approve?
They can all be included.
Okay, so I move the approval of PZ2006SD to include the seven stipulations and the sidewalk and submission of drainage report waivers, all as fully described by Keith.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Both aye. Thank you for waiting, Arthur.
Thank you very much. Quite entertaining. Good night.
Later.
So the next item in Old Business is PZ200, excuse me, PZ2010CAM, Frank and Victoria Corey, Ed Winkie, Coastal Area Management Site Plan Review Application to Accompany Future Zoning Permit Application for the demolition of a single-family residence and the construction of a new single-family residence with onsite septic system. Property located at 18 Rosalie Drive, Mystic, assessors map 175, block 1, lot 32. I believe that Attorney Ladwig is here presenting this application.
I'm here, Keith. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sitting in for Ed Winkie tonight, representing Frank and Victoria Corey. My picture was up earlier, but it disappeared and I don't know how to bring it back. You don't need to see my necktie anyway. We received a variance on this property earlier this year. It's located in the MC80 zone where commercial water-dependent uses are allowed and also permit single-family residents. Existing A-frame house is non-conforming. The variance makes it conforming with the bulk and use in that zone, in the, actually, in the RH10 zone because the lot was existing. Current structure does not comply with the FEMA requirements. There is allows the, there it is. Thank you, Keith. The newly designed, the FEMA requirements, basically, this house is going to be rebuilt and it will be made FEMA compliant, which will make it safer for the neighbors. And the newly designed onsite septic plan has been approved by alleged health district, which will also increase, you know, the safety and the health and safety in that. Potential use is in accordance with the plan of conservation and development. The upgraded structure is in conformity with the characteristics of the neighborhood. We received a CAM approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we're asking the Plant and Zoning Commission tonight also approve our CAM application.
Any questions on this application? This isn't too far from the sewer plant. They don't have sewers?
No sewers, Mr. Chairman, no. We had to design an onsite, which Mr. Winkie did because the, for a variety of reasons, the moratorium in Mystic is still in existence. You know, the diversion of the sewer from Mystic is in the works, but not done. It would be not, I'd have a sewer available, but there is no current plan for an available sewer. So they designed an onsite septic system and approved it.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is Keith Brynes.
Yeah.
After the report was issued, we did get comments from our engineering consultant that only had a very minor comment that there should be a note on the plan about a statement regarding pre- and post-development stormwater rates and volumes. So one of our recommended stipulations here is just that the final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town's engineering consultant, just to tidy that up. Two other recommendations were just final plan shall include the reference to the approved variance and final plan shall show erosion and sedimentation control measures. This was reviewed by the town's floodplain management consultant, who had one minor comment that was addressed by the engineer, was okayed by Ledge Light. And comments are in the report from DEP that were issued along with their CAM application for the variance stage. They have to apply for a CAM application twice as part of this.
Keith, one quick question. Chuck Sheen, the retaining- Keith, one, one quick question. Chuck Sheehan, the retaining wall on the, looks like the north side, can't really tell from this sketch, but the right-hand side looking at the face of the house. The retaining wall complies with our, our requirements of not being higher than three feet, at least my quick look at it. It's two and a half feet tall. That's, it all meets that criteria?
Right, yeah. Looks like they kept it under three.
Okay, good. No more questions for me.
And the applicant agrees with all of the, the staff stipulations.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to approve this application, including the CAM.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All of them, can you go?
Aye.
Aye.
Lynn, you there?
I'm here, yes, aye. Sorry, I'm trying to get to my mic.
Thank you. Opposed? No. Ayes have it. Application approved. Thank you. Thanks for waiting, Ted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commission members, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Ben?
That's it? No more old business?
No more old business.
All right, moving to our public hearing. First went to the General Statute of the State of Connecticut, Revision of 1958, and all amendments thereto, and first went to the zoning regulations for the Town of Stonington, Connecticut. The Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 30th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, well, 9:37 PM, by virtual meeting on the following application, PZ 2007 SUP 30 Extrusion LLC, S. Terenzia, Special Use Permit Application for the Construction of Two Mini Warehouse Storage Facilities with Associated Parking, Landscaping, and Drainage. Property located at 30 and 40 Extrusion Drive, Parketuck Assessors Map 36, Block 4, Lots 2D and 2E, Zones M1 and RR80.
See you at the public hearing tonight. Myself, David Rathbun, Chuck Sheehan, Lynn Conway, Rodney Young, and Bed Gilbert. We'll hear from the applicant first, then any, anyone who likes to speak in favor, anyone opposed, any general, general comments, and then we'll hear from the staff. Mrs. Terenzia? Are you there?
I just had to unmute there.
Good job.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Keith, if it's acceptable, I'm going to share the content on my screen.
Sure.
Okay, see if this works.
Yep.
Yeah, we see it.
Great. One minute, got to pull something up. Okay. For the record, Sergio Terenzia, I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 30 Extrusion Drive LLC. The plans before you this evening were prepared, the land survey and site civil plans that are before you this evening were prepared by my office under my responsible charge, and our offices are located at 99 Mechanic Street, Park St. Terenzia and Associates. I am the president and principal of Terenzia and Associates. With me tonight, all remotely, my client, representative of 30 Extrusion LLC, CJ Barty, he'll be available if there's any, any questions specific to the business operations for the mini storage. Also with me tonight is Holly Beckman, landscape architect, and Julia Leeming, who is the architect for the project. The screen that I have up right now just gives you a general site location map. The property is located off of South Broad Street, located on Extrusion Drive. There's actually two properties, one that's already been developed with storage, and then a second that is subject more or less to this application, which is an addition on to the storage facility. I'll go right to our, our site plan. You can see in the gray area on the property that has already been developed, which was approved by this commission, including the Wetlands Commission and Architecture Review Board, and has been constructed, an existing storage facility consisting of five buildings. The one up in front is a climate-controlled structure. The three remaining, excuse me, four remaining buildings are all drive-up units. There's access off of Extrusion Drive, a driveway that runs into the site. It's all gated. As, as you drive in past the, past the first building, the surface becomes a crushed stone gravel surface, which was, which was approved by the Wetlands Commission and your commission. You loop around these buildings, you can go in between them, all the way to the rear. It's completely fenced right now, and then as you return, there's an, there's an exit, one way in pretty much and one way out. With stormwater at the front, stormwater management are at the front and along the sides. As you can see, there's, in the, in the blue line is the wetlands, the wetlands that are on the perimeter of this property and the one slated for development. So the proposed storage facility, which will be added, it's simply an addition to this, to the existing facility, occupies 1.9 acres of a 12.2 acre site, a site May, let's see. Here's a, here's an aerial that, that shows the existing facility. You can see the wetlands in the back, and if, let me see if I can pull up my existing conditions plan. So this, this is the survey plan. You can see that this property runs way into the back. There's an area that's actually in, this area in gray is a non-developable area. We are developing, you know, the, only a small portion of, of this actually much larger site. So I'll go back to the grading plan. So the portion that's subject to this, this application, we're going to be extinguishing this lot line between the two properties, essentially eliminating any setbacks in the middle of the property, and then we're adding one 14,400 square foot footprint building, that's building two, and building number one, 17,920 square feet. The buildings more or less line up with the, the buildings next door, maintaining the aisles in between. I believe we got about 30, 30 feet separation between the buildings, between 24 and I believe 30 feet for the access drives. As I mentioned, we have, we have crushed stone, this, this hatched area is a, is a crushed stone surface, which is much, much better for, for stormwater drainage to allow for some infiltration, especially being so close to, to the wetlands. All of the impervious area is going to be handled with these stormwater basins. In the front, we pretty much continued the, the same type of design that we did on the adjacent parcel, and with the exception of this drive running through, you know, carried the, the stormwater basins up along the front of the property to the side along Constitution Ave, collecting it in drains, and then also a large sand filter in the back so that everything receives the appropriate, well, both water quality and quantity treatment. That meets the stormwater standards for Connecticut, that, and we don't increase any of the peak, peak development discharges to the wetland. So this has been reviewed by the Town Consulting Peer Reviewing Engineer, has gotten approval through Wetlands Commission, and meets all the, the environmental criteria in order to make sure that we don't create an adverse condition for the, for the adjacent wetlands. The landscape architect, Holly Beckman, in her portion of the, the presentation, will give a little bit more, embellish a little bit more on the landscaping that has been done in these areas, so to make it both aesthetically pleasing, but also to embellish the stormwater management aspect of the site. We are located in a, in a town zoning M1 and RR80. The, the RR80 zone is located on the western side of the property. It's not located in any groundwater protection areas, and the properties on Extrusion and Constitution consist of varying manufacturing uses, such as Davis Standard across the street and the Bus Depot at the, on the other side of Constitution Drive. We're going to meet all the bulk zoning requirements without any need for any variances, including the maximum floor area ratio coverage, given the size of the lot, and, and we're just, we're, we're confining most of the development to the, the portion of the upland on the site that's already been disturbed, and that we're, and we are still managing our stormwater accordingly. We are within a Zone X, 0.2% annual chance of flood hazard, areas of less than of 1% annual chance of flood, so we are, we're not in any, we are in, that portion of the, the lot is not in a flood hazard area. There is a small portion of the property within a special flood hazard area, Zone AE with a base flood elevation between 16 and 17. As you can see, I can zoom in on the site. We are bringing up the elevation of this site up to elevation 22, more or less, and so it's, it's not going to have any adverse, it won't, there won't be any adverse condition with respect to, to the flood hazard. As far as water utilities, we're going to be supplied with Town of Westerly water, just the same as the existing structures. There'll be also gas service for heating of the units, and the sanitary, there's also a building sewer, but this, these buildings don't require, they'll utilize the existing office, which is in this building, which has a bathroom, which is not readily used by the public, it's just required for the office. So the one office already has sewer, we will not need to connect sewer to either of these buildings, and any water service we can connect, I believe, either in between or, or from the street, or with the utilities readily available.
Sergio, is this sprinklered?
Yes, we, we are going to be sprinkled, yes.
So you don't need water for that?
We will need water for the sprinkler system, correct. Yeah, I believe the buildings are over a certain square footage where sprinklers are needed. Traffic to these units, most can attest that they do not have a lot of traffic. People coming to visit, visiting, come to visit their belongings periodically, but once they, once people bring stuff there, they kind of leave it, stare for storage, and come back when they need it. So very low traffic use as compared to many, many other uses that could be on this site. And we have all the adequate parking spaces for the, for the zoning requirement. That pretty much covers a majority of my presentation. Please, the commission, I can let my team members go through their presentations before questions, or I can entertain questions now.
Any questions now? Go right ahead, the next member.
I believe Julia Leeming, I think we're going to, just going to go over this really, the, the structures are pretty basic and match the existing, but she can give a, a short synopsis of, of, run you through what, what the buildings are going to look like.
Sure, thanks, Sergio. Do you mind switching to the rendering image instead of that one? I think that's a better, I have it on my screen, too. If you don't have it up, I can share my screen.
Is it the landscape rendering one?
Yeah, it's the one where the, the roof is blue, the walls are white, and then all the trees show.
You may want to share yours. It might take a minute.
I'll figure out how to share my screen. Okay, are you seeing my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So let me zoom in and just show you. One sec. Okay, so I'm just going to show you the existing buildings, because I think that's the best way to describe the, the proposed building. So the building that you're seeing right here is building one on the existing site, and this is it from Extrusion Drive. And for the proposed buildings, one and two really is just an extension of this existing building vocabulary. So the walls, the, the buildings are manufactured by Tracti, a self-storage building system manufacturer, and we, we propose to use the exact same color for the metal panel walls, which they call slate gray, and harbor blue for the roof. Both buildings are single-story, like the building that we're seeing here. They'll have the same eve low point, which is nine foot four, the same roof pitch, which is a three to 12 pitch, and our two buildings are, are both climate-controlled, which means they won't have exposed doors on the exterior. There's, there's one, a few doors for people to come in and out, but they're not drive-up units, so you don't have lots of garage doors visible. They are sprinkled, and honestly, I think that, that sums it up. I think Holly's done a really beautiful job of proposing landscaping that will nuance the building elevations from the street side, but the, the idea is to take, take the vocabulary from the first phase, bring it over to this, the second phase, and really make the whole thing feel like, like it was one thought, one complex, and that everything complements the existing facility.
Just, I have a question. So you enter into the buildings, like at the end, and then inside are segmented.
Exactly. There are hallways, exactly. So you enter through a threshold, a doorway, and then there are a series of internal hallways, and those hallways have roll-up doors often to access your climate-controlled unit.
So it's sort of like an, an inside garage, then?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I can stop sharing if I can figure out how. Stop sharing. And then Holly, do you want to take it over?
My, okay, hi. Sergio, is it possible for you to put up the lens? Oh, here it is. Okay, great.
You shared it earlier, Holly.
Thank you. So I just would like to start off, I'm Holly Beckman, by the way, and thank you, Julia. I'd like to start off just saying that we meet and exceed, you know, all the requirements, zoning requirements, and I'll just start off with saying that, you know, there, I think Sergio went over that we have 17 parking spaces, and so the landscape requirements are that we have landscape area of 340 square feet. Well, we meet and exceed that many times over, as you can see on the, on the plan, and that the shade trees, we have one in 10 spaces, we have 17 spaces, we have proposed two shade tree requirements is one per 40 feet, and that gives us seven trees that are, that are required, and we are proposing actually nine. Actually, we have on the site 12, 12 trees that we're proposing along the building frontage and the street frontage. So, so anyway, we meet and exceed all the requirements, and I would like to start like to start off, if I may, with starting at the north northwest side. And that would be where the existing buildings are. And we have an existing ornamental steel fence. And from that is we're going to extend that. And that's a gate system that they use to get in and out. And that's on the existing, at that point, asphalt drive. It's just a small section of asphalt drive as you come in. But for the landscape of the building that Julia had shown, we are there's an infiltration system there. And so we're proposing, you know, some some birch trees and and some seasonal planting, seasonal interest plantings that will sort of camouflage, but camouflage the infiltration, actually make it work a little bit more efficiently and sort of soften the building as well. And those are we're proposing native plantings along there. And that's on Extrusion Drive that you'll see. And as we come along the the south side, we continue that theme along the infiltration area until we get to the rear side of Building 1. And that is we have a fence, and that's where our fencing continues or picks up and it ties into that Building 1 and then follows the parking area heading, as you can see, heading south, and eventually ties in on the backside of the gravel driveway. And that's the and it the fence ties into the existing fence on the other side. I have street trees that we have with that we are proposing along the parking area. And that will meet the town requirements. Whoops, sorry. As we come around the corner, you'll see the proposed sand filter and the sedimentary forbay. We are proposing conservation seed in there and slope seed mixes in that area so that that is not mowed, but will become more naturalized looking. We are also providing some vegetation where the there's a sort of an outfall area. And so we're proposing native plantings in that area as well. So and those would be wetland, wetland variety plants. The fencing will be eight foot feet tall and metal ornamental, and it matches what is on the on the abutting site. I think and then we again, we tie right back into the existing site. So it complements the the abutting storage facility. We we have, as I said, natives. We the plantings, for the most part, are drought tolerant for the, you know, it takes a couple of years for them to get get to get settled in, but they're but they're drought tolerant. And and certainly, we we're trying to make it as native as possible and and bring the wetlands vegetation on up towards the site until we get to the gravel driveway. I think the maintenance on this will be a maintenance manual will be provided so that the the town can be assured that they'll be that they'll maintain this. And I think from there, you know, I will take any questions that people have. I can go through the plant list if you would like. But I'll take questions because I know it's been a long night. Any questions at this time?
This has been, will there be outside lighting?
Sergio, you know, we're not proposing any. But there may be security lighting on the building.
There will be there'll be can you all still hear me? I just want to make sure I'm not muted.
Yes.
Yeah. So there'll be lighting just on the building. Let me see if I can pull up that plan here. Give me a minute.
This is Lynn. While Sergio's bringing up the the plan, is there any proposed change to the signage?
This is CJ, one of the partners. Yeah, there's there will be no additional signage. We're leaving everything that is.
Thank you.
And as for the lighting, I think the, you know, I don't know if Sergio's been able to pull it up yet because I'm not I'm not able to access the online right now. But the the plan is to have just a few downward facing light on the actual buildings. There's some pole lights out on the site today, the existing site. Some of the pole lights that separate 30 and 40 extrusion are actually going to be removed, and they will not be replaced. So no new pole lights will go up, whatever existing pole lights are on the 30 extrusion site, which, at the end of the day, will be on the right side of the property. And there's a couple in the back. Those will those will remain on the new development, but no new pole lights will be put up.
That's a good one. That's a plan that shows the location of the lights, that they use all along the building, located on the layout plan. And also, I'll just offer, I think you can see my screen still. This is the photometric plan. And for those of you who are familiar with photometric plans, all these little spots are the light shed. And you'll notice that there are zeros at the property line and towards the wetlands, as well as towards the street. So that identifies that these are the foot candles. And it identifies that we're only lighting enough area around the building, mostly for safety and for security purposes.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sergio, when I when I kind of I remember this application from the from the original building. Wasn't there something about the timing of the lighting being on and off as well?
Lighting today goes on at pardon me, lighting today goes on at dusk and shuts off as the sun is coming up. Industry, you know, from the from the research we did before we did this first phase, industry practice is to have light on the building, just a small amount of downward facing light on the building, simply because if you have a storage facility or anything with valuables inside and it's completely black outside, you're welcoming a problem at some point.
Right, security. Right. Yeah.
We've done a minimal amount. Inside the buildings, they're on they're on sensors, which the minute you open the door, they go off. But, you know, the security cameras, it just every single angle around a light on the site as well.
Okay. So my other question had to do, Julia, with your presentation on the landscaping and the pictures that you showed of the current buildings. So those bushes look pretty small to me. What what size of the plantings that you plan on putting around, whether they're bushes or trees? What are the what's the size, please?
Oh, I think you're you're posing that to Holly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. That's all right. I'm just, well, they are, well, we have varying sizes, but the trees are two to two and a half, two and a half to three inch caliber, the street trees. And there are some birches that are 10 to 12 feet tall, those along the front of the building. And and there's a pine, seven to eight feet. The shrubs themselves are they're number threes, which is around two to two and a half feet tall, or shrubs. There are some perennials in there as well.
Yeah. I just think that what you've got there now, right? And I think the facility's been in for about two years, right?
For three years, yeah, three years in April.
Oh, thank you. Three years. They're awful small. They're kind of almost nonexistent three years later.
We lost, so the original, we had a problem with some of the plantings. So the original plantings were obviously done in March, April of 2017. Those plantings, I got to be honest with you, two years later, it was a disaster. So a lot of them were ripped up, we replaced them. We were already, you know, the plans were already in motion to work on the second phase. So the higher level idea was put something simple in now that's going to grow a little bit and not just be plain grass. And then when we do the second phase here, is to, you know, substantially upgrade all the plantings when we do the second phase. So it just doesn't look awkward at this next at this next phase.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that background. Yeah, because, you know, I just think that it's a great use of of the space. But I do think you can do a lot with the plantings to make it a little bit more, you know, just more interesting. Let's put it that way. Yep.
Of course. We actually, we moved some additional trees around and we moved some stuff around when we did this replanting. And, you know, some of the larger trees in the front have taken very well. But now we'll do a much more substantial planting once we do the second phase back on the first phase.
Okay, thank you.
Replanting, I should say.
So nice to hear it's successful and you're going along so well.
Thank you very much for that.
Mr. Chairman, a question on the on the water infrastructure. They mentioned that it's it's going to be sprinkled, the new buildings. Are the old buildings sprinkled as well?
CJ, do you want to take that or you want?
Yeah, you know, the the first phase and the buildings are not sprinkled. And it's just simply because the size, the size of the actual building. The next this next phase, the buildings are going to be a little bit larger, which is going to require the sprinklers. There'll be there'll be, yeah, both of the buildings will be sprinkled, but because of the way we designed the first phase, they were not.
So are you saying that you're going to have to retrofit the existing buildings as a result?
No, 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 the existing buildings will stay as they are. Just the newer buildings are going to be just larger in the overall square footage under the roof, which is what necessitates.
Are there any water tanks or subsurface pumps or anything like that that are going to be necessary to get the fire pressure and volume that you need for buildings this large?
As of this, as of this meeting, no, they're they're not. And to be totally frank with you, there's never been any discussion of any sort of of any sort of tanks or any sort of additional pressure needed to sprinkle those buildings.
Have there been flow tests? Have there been flow tests? See that you have?
We've engaged, we've engaged an engineer, I believe, the Town of Westerly for that. Sergio, I'm going to let you talk to that really quick. Because I don't know if the final study came out.
Yeah, so the Town of Westerly requires that they have their their engineer who holds the model for all the all the wet water in Westerly, water system in Westerly, their C and E engineers, Tom Nicholson. So we went through a process with the Town of Westerly of filing this application with them, identifying what our fire flow requirements were. And then he runs his models and identifies what the requirements are and if the system can provide adequacy. We don't have the results of that report yet. And I'd be happy to condition this approval upon that study, a verification of that study. Just the timing of such, we're we submitted beginning of last month, I think it was. But there was questions on if additional hydrants were needed. The fire chief just got back to us, I think, last last week and identified that there is adequate hydrants on the street, being on Constitution Drive and right in front of our facility. So we have adequate coverage there for hydrants. It's just a matter of if we have enough pressure and flow to satisfy the fire flows for the sprinkler system, which we should get verification on, I'm assuming relatively soon. Just anecdotally, you have Davis Standard, which is a very big building across the way. And my conversations with with Mr. Bryant is that there really hasn't been any issues with any buildings in this area with respect to adequacy of water pressure and and flow. That does not mean that our our study may come back where it may need booster pumps or extra tanks. But it's unlikely that it will. And if it does, we will, we will make the appropriate changes to our plans to, or I should say, modifications, upgrades to whatever is needed for the water system.
I just, I just think that.
Real quick, though, at the onset, when we when we were planning this project, Westerly Water didn't express any initial concerns that we would need additional pressure or that the system was not adequate enough to service what we're going to be proposing.
I raise it just because if you have to bring back, you know, if you have to install tanks, I think you'd have to come back unless they were subsurface. So, you know, I hate to see I have to do that. But but, you know, let's let them run the hydraulic model. It's typical that the water companies would run the hydraulic model. It's just no different than it is anywhere else in the country. So if it's not done, it's not done. Let's have to have to wait and see. But I think if you're going to have any kind of a surface tank outside, you'd probably have to come back.
Agreed. And again, they they didn't express any concerns when we when we contacted them initially. And, you know, as they've gone through their process, they haven't had any made made no mention of any any issues that they were going to pursue.
That's great. It's probably unlikely, though.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the answer.
One piece of information, which is that the threshold for the sprinkler requirement is 12,000 square feet. But an alternative to needing sprinklers for these two buildings would be to construct a fire barrier, so essentially a fireproof partition to make the building, each side of the building smaller than 12,000 square feet, which is easily doable with the size of the buildings that we have. So there is a Plan B if we do have an issue with the water pressure.
Good work, Aron. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone else like to speak in favor of this application? I don't think anyone else is around. Anyone opposed this application? Holly, any general comments? Do I hear motion for public hearing?
Yeah. Well, there's no zoning issues with this application. We received comments from various departments, ADRB reviewed this, approved it as presented. They thought it was a good extension of the existing site. As Mr. Sharenzia mentioned, Pawtucket Fire District said he didn't feel there was a need for any additional hydrants. As far as the recommended stipulations here, there were six listed in the staff report. I can go through these if you.
For the record, please.
Yeah, for the record, please.
Yeah, number, number one was that the applicant's design engineer of record shall provide inspection services and to certify, set, and to certis- excuse me, it's late. Certify to the construction of all stormwater management systems and ensure compliance with design specifications. Certifications shall include but not be limited to system bottom inspection, material specifications and testing, system insulation prior to backfill, and outlet structure construction. In addition to inspection services, as-built conditions of the drainage system shall also be provided to the Department of Planning prior to the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance. On number two, the property owners are responsible for yearly required maintenance of stormwater infrastructure as specified on the plans and maintenance checklist. The stormwater maintenance checklist shall be recorded along with the final plans. Uh, number three is the standard language for requiring an erosion and sedimentation control bond. Number four, um, stormwater management system shall be installed and established prior to the issuance of any zoning permits for building construction. Number five, the DEP general stormwater permit shall be obtained prior to the issuance of any zoning permits. Number six, prior to the issuance of any zoning permits, final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded, and lots shall be formally combined. I would add a number seven, just judging on the conversation, which was that planting shall be reestablished at 30 Extrusion Drive according to the previously approved plans. And the votes before you here are just the decision on the waivers requested and the special use permit itself.
All right, thank you, Keith. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I suggest we add a condition number eight, which would be that the, uh, hydraulic model by the water district and fire suppression plan be finalized, either the structural modification or the, the hydraulic modification be selected, but that it be a number eight.
And we'll get back to, when we get to the motions. We gotta close the public hearing first. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Favor calls the public hearing?
Hi.
Hi.
Now do I hear a motion on the application?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve, uh, application PZ 2007, special use permit for 30 Extrusion LLC, subject to the, uh, seven conditions that Keith mentioned to include the waivers, and also to add a condition number eight, that, uh, fire suppression plans be finalized to include either the structural option, uh, mentioned by the architect, or the hydraulic, uh, model, uh, option mentioned by Mr. Sharenzia.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any more, any discussion? All of those in favor?
Hi.
Both? I just have it. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharenzia.